United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our March 12th Tiverton School Committee meeting. I'm going to ask for a motion to move up item eight B, construction update.
Make that motion to move up item eight B, construction update.
Second.
All others in favor? Mr. DeQuatro, where are you? Mr. DeQuatro represents RGB, our architect, also our agent for the school renovation project. Welcome, Mr. DeQuatro.
Hello, thanks for having me again. So, I have some forms, I guess there's a question relative to reimbursement, what that policy is and the next steps. You want me to go into that, or do you want me to just talk about where the construction schedule is and when it's expected to be completed?
The latter first.
Okay, so, we're on schedule for three weeks, end of March, I think, two weeks now, to be completed with punch list. We're going through that right now. It's been a little delayed, as I understand it through talking with the contractor, due to balancing issues. Balancing companies, there's just so many of them that are around for the amount of construction that's going on right now, so scheduling them, and the punch list, these little here and little there getting people back. So, they're expected to be done by the end of this month, that's what I'm being told.
And, just sort of for everyone's, I guess, identification, a punch list is sort of that list of things, kind of the to-do list at the end of a, of any sort of project.
Correct, when you're done with construction, if one of the workers hits a rail or something and dings it and scratches the paint, those are all things that, you know, you don't own that, you own a finished product, so, they go back. We generate a list of things in every room and space that was touched, of things that have to be fixed to bring it up to the same standard. And we then compile that list, we send that to the contractor, and they do those things. And sometimes they're tedious things, so I've got to bring back a painter for the different spots here and there. It takes a little while to do that.
Okay. And then the other issue you were going to speak to was the reimbursement process?
Reimbursement, so now, there's a couple of issues. There's one that, so now you're at the end of your construction process, and you hand in this form, which I have copies of tonight. This is online at Ride's website, so I'll give you these tonight. So also, I have tonight with me is a school construction bond presentation. These are the new percentages you can get back for reimbursement. This is up to date, this is 2019, and again, you can have a copy of this as well. I'm available anytime if you have certain questions on this. There are percentages that are allowed now that weren't allowed when your bond passed. If you remember back, when the bond passed, it was a different set of regulations in Ride than there are now, both good and bad. Good is a little faster then than it is now, as far as permitting and approval. You are eligible for less percentages. I believe back when we did the bond, it was 35 percent. Now you're eligible for up to seventeen and a half percent more, if you did projects similar to what you're doing now. And some of those are 5 percent for security. If you look at your vestibule right now, a lot of schools are moving towards or similar to what you already have in place, that, what I call a man trap. It's to bring a person in and keep them in that position, and control them until they've been identified as a person that either is someone's parent or someone that's supposed to pick up a child or not, and then let them in the school at that point, or direct them to go back out of the school at that point. So, that's been done, but that was part of your last project, so you can't apply for that extra 5 percent now. But going forward, if you did any kind of renovations, more renovations, you can apply for that extra percentage and get them then.
They won't let us do retroactive?
They won't. They won't let you be retroactive.
That's not right.
It isn't right? I mean, we can try, and I can cite towns like Lincoln and North Providence and Barrington, who got successful bonds and went in for that big reimbursement and did get it.
Because you know why, we were proactive in being safe and everything.
And that was their argument as well.
We should be penalized for that.
I mean, I can always, I can make a call. I can check it out and then check that out, it's worth a call. But as the standards are written today, don't qualify.
No, I know what you mean, but we can try, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. But there's other provisions, you get 5 percent for Energy Star type of ratings, and again, I believe you did that as well with your ventilators, they passed all chip requirements for sound, acousticals, and sound generating, so that's too as well. We can verify with that.
Thank you.
And this is something that your firm will collaborate with us or work with us on this?
Yeah.
So, the...
Not a big push on my end, it's more or less phone calls and a couple of meetings, so...
Right. So, it was 35 percent when the project was initiated, when we submitted our project to Ride, and you said it went up by seventeen and a half percent?
No, you can get up to seventeen and a half percent. With the legislature passage, you can get up to 20 percent, but it's only half of what your max is. Your max, I believe, is 35, half of that's seventeen and a half, plus the 35 is 52 and a half, I think the number is.
That's a big difference.
So, that's up to, which you can get, if they approve it.
If they approve it, we could get up to 52 and a half percent. We're not going below 35 percent.
Correct.
Okay, that's...
You've got 35 percent. So, the way that triggers is, once you're done with construction, you send those forms in, and then the payments start after that, that preceding year.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
The reason I ask that is when we went to build the three elementary schools, the floor of the wealth-based formula in the state is 30. And as you know, we got 30, or 30-point-something. So then, as other schools were coming up doing it, I was watching it, and they were getting 40, 45, and some schools across get 90 in the cities and towns, I understand that. So, at the same time, we were doing 30, a school was doing two middle schools for 80. So, we went to the General Assembly every year, Mr. Fiore, myself, and Representative Edwards, to ask them to give us, at least bring us up, you know, because it's not a lot from the state, but it would help the town with our taxes and everything. So, we did go every year and apply for that, and every year it was helpful for the study. We know that went to the barrel.
Yeah, I think as a baseline now, everyone gets 35 minimum, I think it's because of Tiverton.
Yeah, but at the time, it was 30. But at least we got that moved to 35, so that's good.
Correct, that was good.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee?
Just Sally, do you think maybe we could reach out to Representative Edwards on our behalf of this project?
Well, I'd love to, if you'd like to, we could all do that. And you know, it doesn't hurt, because if they hear from...
Too bad they weren't here tonight at the same time.
Yeah, that's good.
Asking...
There are various new programs that Ride is putting out, there's a pay-as-you-go program, which means that as much as you pay, they immediately reimburse them, they don't have to wait for an entire year to reimburse you.
Well, that's good, yeah.
So, there are other programs out there. You should, and I believe I'm working with Peter now anyway, we're looking at our five-year plan, updating the five-year plan, to keep that in the queue for the work that's coming on, onboard. And you can manipulate the five-year...
Thank you for all the work you've done with us on all this.
Oh, no, I was just telling Kelly, it's actually a pleasure.
Honestly.
It's a great building committee, great school committee, that hasn't been an issue, it's one of those dream projects, so...
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Wish all of them like this.
I do have one more question. The roofs and all the leak issues we had, have those ceased entirely?
I believe they have, but it's an ongoing thing that you have a warranty for, so noticeably if Mr. Mendez finds a leak or whatnot, he needs to call, and they'll have the ball ball come down there. Usually when a building, when you put rubber on it for a building for the first cycle, when it has a chance to expand and contract, that's where you're going to get all your tears and pulls, depending on when they put them down. And once they go through that first cycle, then what I would suggest is you get the roofer back on a yearly cycle and have him do a maintenance walk-through. It costs minimum amount of dollars, but what it ends up doing is doubles your warranty. It's like your own house. If you walked around your house every year and noted everything that was wrong over the winter, you're, you know, you'd be less to do, but your house would last longer, instead of waiting till there's a big issue, and it costs a lot of money that way. But I can kind of check into that if you want me to as well. I've recommended that to other school systems and other building owners.
Sure, that'd be great. Just back to the reimbursement issue, so, there was our, well, there was the original facilities study, and then there was the capital plan submitted to Ride, and we're sort of getting into smaller and smaller, sort of circles of a Venn diagram, I guess. And then there's what the scope of the bond was. So, if we were to do the stuff that was not necessarily in the scope of the bond, but was within the Ride, the capital plan submitted to Ride, which reimbursement would likely...
So, you would apply for the higher reimbursement now, because the new laws apply. So, you take that five-year plan, and you would update that five-year plan, with all those components that either you couldn't afford or you decided not to do, and you'd apply for that, through a stage one, stage two application?
Do we have to resubmit the application, then?
You do. Once your stage two is done, it's finalized, you've completed that one. Now, the next one, the next submission is due November, I think it's November 1st or the 15th. They just set up a second one. Prior to, about a month ago, they only had one. And because the abundance of schools that were applying, they said that we'll put another one in November. So, as of September, I believe, you have to come up with a stage one, and then November would be a stage two.
Okay.
Now, when you do get a stage two, and you do apply for it, then you have five years to use that. So, if you say you're going to spend X amount of dollars, you have five years to spend it. So, you do have some time, but it also puts you in a position where you have to do something as well.
Maybe I'm not understanding correctly. So, our capital plan to Ride, I forget, I think it was maybe $25 million worth of work?
Yeah.
We have to resubmit that in order for the higher reimbursement to govern?
Your five-year, if it's, I'm not sure how many years you left, you have in five year, I think you've got one or two years left. You don't.
I have three, but be that as it may.
You don't. Then that's a five-year plan. What you do have to reapply for is a stage one, stage two. If you don't, if your five year is expended, then you have to reapply for another five year.
I'm getting at the 50 percent, so...
Yeah.
Do we have to resubmit our application in order for that number, for the higher number to potentially govern?
For the work you've already done, or the work you want to...
No, the work we may do.
Yeah, so you'd have to resubmit under a stage one, stage two. So, stage one, you identify what the problem is, that could be that part of that five-year plan, and then the stage two is you have to show some documents.
We're not precluded from doing that with our old documentation and/or because our initial five-year term hasn't ended yet?
No, unfortunately not. Your five, there's two, there's three things. There's a five-year plan, there's a stage one, there's a stage two. The five-year plan runs concurrently, the stage one and two runs if you want to request for that money. So, a five-year plan, what it does is it tells that the Department of Education, that every school system is looking into their best interests of their building assets for the next five years, that's why they want that. A stage one and two is the projects that you want to then introduce and do, then you put a stage one, stage two for reimbursement. You can do emergency repairs off your five-year, which you don't need a stage one, a stage two. Those would have to be emergency repairs, like you've done in the past, sidewalks, boilers, which you've just done.
But I guess what I'm getting at is, we don't have to resubmit the five-year plan, then?
You do not, no. But if you did want to do a big project where you wanted to have reimbursement, you'd have to do that, stage one, stage two.
Okay, yeah.
So, now, what's coming, and I should say this, because I know it, and then you should know it, is that what they're doing to towns now is they're making you do what they call an educational plan. So, they're bringing everyone up to the same level, and they're looking at 21st century spaces versus 20th century spaces. So, your next round of stage one, stage two, Ride may ask you to do an educational plan, which is just another consultant planner that comes in, and they interview different teachers and administrative staff, and they look at different spaces around the school. Those spaces could be steam spaces or special spaces and learning environments for that 21st century. And then they'll look at your demographics, they'll make you update your demographics, and marry the two together, and you incorporate that into your stage one and stage two. So, it's a little bit more complicated, like I said earlier, than the last time you did it. It's like everything else, when they want to give you more money, you've got to do more things, right? That's the way you've got to look at it.
Yeah, although the infrastructure we were looking at really didn't have a direct impact on the educational plan, per se. I can sort of see the point to that, particularly in new construction, and certainly, that'd be certainly something we could always look at, but...
When I say they may is, they want every town and city to do it, and they look at, it may be an opportunity to have that done. To the degree, and I mean, fixing sidewalks would be a hard argument to make you do your educational plan.
You are.
But certainly, $26 million, they may open that up. That's all I'm suggesting. So, if you tell me what you want to do the next, if you do want to do a stage one, stage two, I can certainly inquire to see what's expected, off the record, so nothing's official.
This is largely a pipe dream, I think, at this point, but, you know, it's good to know.
So, what I would do now is just keep your five-year up to date, and there's emergency funding that is available for emergency repairs, as pay-as-you-go repairs that are available now, that you don't have to go through that process, so, for any of your elementary or secondary schools.
Okay.
Where do we stand with the contingency funds?
So, right now, we keep an Excel sheet of all that, I was just going to send that out again, I can send that again to Peter tomorrow. We have basically $30,000 left.
Something like that.
Which is really nice. So, I use Tiverton as an example for all the towns and cities I'm working with, where you didn't use your contingency on what you should do. A contingency set aside money just in case something happens, or if you open up a ceiling and there's something unexpected. I always tell clients that what you want to do is you want to create a wish list of that money, so if you don't spend it, you can do that wish list. So, what you're seeing is new lights and ceilings, so you used it pretty wisely.
No, that didn't come out of the contingency.
That came out of the reserve fund.
Oh, special funds?
But it, yeah, it was not, for the most part, was not used for, you know, unanticipated discoveries, it was for, you know, upgrading the project overall.
It's nice.
But there's only about $30,000, that's my reckoning as well.
So, at some point, are we going to get a full accounting of the project, so that we can see soup to nuts what was spent on what, not necessarily at the invoice level, but...
Viewing that, so we can still...
I think we, as the...
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah, there should, at, you know, some point, be a final report of the building committee back to this committee. The building committee technically is a subcommittee of the superintendent, or, you know, sort of a committee of the superintendent, not of this committee, but still, you're right, it's our obligation to know that.
Absolutely.
And we would be interested in knowing it.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
Will the building committees stay as a standing building committee, since that's one of the things you have to have with Ride, in case something else comes up? We should have them, you know, I don't mean meeting, I mean, just so that we can call them together if we, if we need them to convene, you know what I mean?
I think as an issue of governance, again, it's a committee of the superintendent, not of ours.
No, but...
And I would look to his advice about that.
Right, because that's what happened with the Septic System, we didn't have a standing building committee, so we couldn't get reimbursed. That's one of the things that they want you to have, when they set it up. So, we could look into that, right? Thank you.
I think in particular, if we're going to, you know, review again the five-year plan, that would be the obvious group of people to do that, but, again, I think it's something that ultimately is up to the superintendent. Anybody else from administration, principals, students, public, members of the public? Any other questions for Mr. DeQuatro? All right, thank you very much.
So, I've got three forms I want to hand out. So, it's a Housing Aid reimbursement form, this is the actual form you fill out for reimbursement, and then these are the new guidelines, 2019.
Okay. You have one copy or multiple copies?
Let's see what she gave me, I believe she gave me one copy of this.
All right, so maybe we can...
Multiple copies of this application, I think about eight to 10 of this, and one copy of the Housing Aid reimbursement.
Okay, so maybe we can ask, if Mr. Mendez or I was to copy for us and scan it and send it out electronically?
Okay.
If you want to just give it to whoever's hand seems to be closest.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing, Dr. Larkin?
Sure.
Just on that issue of leaks, you have to remember the next two big items that we have hanging over our heads for repairs are upgrading the windows and bathrooms. So, leaking may still happen at times when there's wind-driven rain, it will come in through the missing seals.
My question was more for my roofs.
Yeah, but if you hear through the rumor vine that there's leaks, it doesn't mean that it's the roofs, it could be the windows, just so you know.
It's been upgraded from grape to rumor? In Tiverton? Never. So, I think we're going to go to open forum and consent agenda, and then probably go into executive as a point of order, and the reason for that is I want to have the full committee here for the budget discussion, and Mrs. Palace is on her way. So, is there anybody signed up for open forum? Okay. So, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All others in favor? Dr. Sanquioni?
One item under personnel, appointment of a part-time lunch lady at Fort Barton, Darlene Maroas.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. And, Mrs. Black, the Health and Wellness Subcommittee?
Yes, we just had one of our Health and Wellness meetings. Every, every town and city and school committee has to have a Health and Wellness Committee, and we just had ours, it was really wonderfully well-attended, with nurses and gym teachers and everything, from the schools and principals. I appreciate the principal from the middle school was there, and she had a lot to offer about the grant that we're looking into. And there was a woman here from the state, Karen Wetherell, and we had people here from Newport County Prevention. We told them how we work together all the time, because it's all about the same thing. Some students came that did their trip to Washington, and they were fabulous, and they showed how we do the pass-it-down-to-theelementary and middle schools about smoking and vaping and all the different things that they have to hear about. And so, it was really a good meeting. And the trust was here, and she even brought healthy snacks for us, so we all had a chance to have dinner, so that was nice. But we do go to the schools K through 12 and visit the food advisory groups to see how they like the food in the fall, and then we go back in the spring, and they tell us, when we first went, they wouldn't say anything, and then we said, "You have to tell us the truth, or we can't help you." Then they started telling us the truth, and that was really something. So, what they do in the elementary school is, if they bring a recipe from home, they'll name it after the child, so it's like Suzie's whatever, and they love that. And the principal of the middle school, of Pecassett, would you like to tell us what you just heard about the child that wants to have the vegan lunch?
Oh, she just, I had a first grader approach me today and ask if we could talk about having some vegan choices on the menu, as we have about four or five students now this year that are vegans. So, I told her I would bring it to the Health and Wellness Committee.
Right, so she can come to the food advisory meeting, and Chatwells will be there, and they will accommodate, of course accommodate, they accommodate everything that they have to. Remember when we lost the coffee milk, because it was a little too expensive?
Is that vegan?
And we went crazy, because it's the state milk, and we said, "That's just not right." So, we had all the kids write to the state, and then we had pictures taken, it was fantastic, we had a campaign. And when they first made the rules, it was crazy, because they don't ask us anything. And it was, they went from zero to whole wheat, and a lot of the kids weren't used to whole wheat, so they were eating the food, throwing away the thing. So, what good is that? So, Chatwells was wonderful, they worked so hard to make a recipe, find a bakery that would make the food that was edible, everything has to be partially wheat, even the pasta and the pizza, so it's different consistency, and the kids didn't like it, and they were throwing it away. So, I think we're getting close, they even made a cookie that was, like, acceptable, because the rules are so strict. Rhode Island has the strictest rules in the whole country, but we're still trying to make it edible. Like I said, can't put a candle on a carrot, you've got to be reasonable, when I testified at the State House. Talk to us, talk to the people with the boots on the ground, the people working with the kids. So, we did get an award from the governor for having that food advisory group. Think about it, we asked the consumer, you know, we went to the kids, so that was good. So, it was a great meeting, and we'll have two more, you have to have them quarterly. So, anyone that can come, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Sanquioni, would you mind introducing our acting director of Finance and Administration?
Absolutely, it would be my pleasure. So, seated to my left is Mr. Joe Crowley, he's acting interim finance director. Joe has a wealth of experience serving that role in multiple communities, including Newport,
Portsmouth, Middletown.
Knight-Mohibeh.
Knight-Mohibeh, okay, that's enough. So, we're fortunate to have him here, he's already made a huge impact on the work we're doing.
Okay, thank you, welcome. So, I am going to ask for a motion to go into an executive session on Rhode Island General Law 42465A1, job performance, character, physical or mental health, superintendent's goals.
Make that motion. Second.
All others in favor?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be back, hopefully not too much... Eight A, discussion FY '20 budget, Dr. Sanquioni.
Okay. So, I'll call your, I know you have the presentation, but I'll also call your attention to the screen, to go through, hopefully, the last iteration of this budget that we will be showing here before we go in front of the Budget Committee. So, I'm going to skip through some slides, because you've seen these, we've talked about our goals, and we looked at projection for enrollment and expenditures, and get into the budget numbers here. So, per your request of our meeting from last Tuesday, I've revised the budget request to reflect an increase in some personnel. It's moved the numbers just a little bit, but today I'm recommending to you your approval of a budget of 31.9 million, and I'll use round numbers here. I'm going to skip through these charts and get into the major part of the budget. So, our budget is divided into two major categories, salary and expenses, salary making up 80 percent of the budget request. If you go from the top line, what we currently budget for salary, 17.2 million, and then you look at the bulleted items in the middle there, those are fixed and mandated costs other than the staff additions at 90,000. So, steps, lane changes, contracts, longevity, those are costs that you are committed to provide under the contracts and the agreements that we have. So, that brings our budget request to about 18.5 million dollars, or an increase of about 1.2 million, 7.3 percent. So, when we first brought the budget to you, we were asking to...
7.3 percent of the salary?
Of the salary, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not of the total budget?
Not the total. We'd asked for 7.8 FTEs, we recognized that to bring this budget in fiscally responsible, we'd have to adjust that. So, tonight, I bring to you these positions, I think these are the priorities amongst the 7.8 that we were originally asking for. That's a behavior specialist at the middle school, remedial math at Ranger, physics at the high school, elementary instructional leaders, truancy residency support for the district as a whole, and then, you know, a small amount for stipends for athletics and clubs. As you saw, there was a pretty lengthy list of clubs and athletics that are not currently being funded, this would certainly help just a little bit. So, our principals are here tonight to talk about any of the positions that are up there, and/or when we get to the capital request, anything that impacts their buildings. On the expense side, so the other 20 percent of our budget, currently working on 13 million, looking to add about 400,000, brings it up to about 13.4. It's a 3.4 percent increase, just in that 20 percent side. And as we've expressed to you, the major drivers here are small increase for technology, a very small increase for athletics, transportation contract, that's a fixed and mandated cost, and then the maintenance contract that you voted to move over to the expense side a couple of weeks ago. So, I'm going to skip the historical numbers and return on investment, and make sure we invest, and get into this budget a little deeper for you. So, again, the overall request to bring in that budget, 13, 31.9 million, which is a 5.6 increase overall, it needs about 1.7 million dollars in revenue. State aid has come in at 776,198, so, you subtract that, the town would be asked to contribute 922,354, which is a 3.93 percent increase over last year. What I've put for you in the middle there is how the increase could be at 4 percent, that's the maximum allowed, and certainly, we're a little bit below that, which is that line there. there. And what this budget does is meets all of our fixed and mandated costs, brings in that 1.4 new staff, and does small increases, as you saw, for technology, curriculum, and the athletic budget. It does not fund capital. So that's a separate request that we're hoping the town revenue can provide for us. So I want to call your, before I go to the next slide, it's real important that you look at that 31.9 million dollar budget. So that's a request there and you can see what it funds. Because when I come over here now and I'm showing you what potentially could be a budget that the town is looking at, they first mentioned a 2% increase in the budget. So 2% is 469,000 plus the state aid. That brings the budget in at 31.5 million. Again, I showed you 31.9 million. That's the budget you're asking. I'm using a number here, 31,591,790. That is a bare bones budget request. So what, in essence, what happened there is I stripped out the new staff and I stripped down our expense accounts. So I'm saying to you, that is absolutely the lowest budget number that could come in for the school department to keep things going exactly how they have been going this year with no new increases.
So that 330, because it's about 330,000. So no new staff. What else did you strip? That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so those expense accounts there, the athletic one, the one in technology, and then kind of just little bits from all the other expense accounts, any place we could trim.
What about the maintenance contract?
Maintenance contract is in. I mean, you prioritize that as something that's very important.
So you basically, to make up the difference between the 13-9 and the 31-6, you just went and just, everything you thought you could possibly whack out, you took. And we still would have 113,000.
Right, so I was getting to that line. And that's the important point for the school committee to understand, the community to understand, and the budget committee to understand that. There's no, so 80% of our budget is staffing. And I'm saying to you that the 20% that's expenses has stripped to bare bones. So it's energy, it's transportation, it's special ed, it's the things we have to do. So at a 2% budget, that's 113, and it doesn't sound like a lot, 113,147 deficit. The problem is the only place you can go with that is people. There's not an expense account left to strip. So that's an important point to make. Now, the second line, below the line there, the town council voted a budget, or I don't know if it's voted is the right term, but is put into documentation, a budget of 31,384,827. So if you take the same math there, and I'm saying to you, you have to have 31,591, and they're saying that budget, that's a 206,000 deficit, 963. But I just want to show that, again, that increase is state aid with the town contributing 375,261, which is 1.59%. So it's a very minimal increase, you know, on the town side. And, you know, obviously most of it, you know, two-thirds of it is state aid. Again, I'm going to continue to make the same point, that with expense accounts already reduced to minimum levels, this deficit can only be observed by cuts to personnel.
You know, and let's be clear, the council has absolutely no authority to recommend any budget. So that number is really neither here nor there. It's irrelevant, it's something they threw out. But the only people that can recommend a budget are the school committee and our budget committee.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we want to educate the budget committee that because they've seen this number, that the impact, what that number brings.
Absolutely, Peter.
I'm going to skip this slide because I haven't seen anyone advocating for the $1 ad, but if that was ever the situation, well, we might as well close the doors and do something different. So the good news is that hasn't, I haven't seen that. Capital, so capital needs to be funded from town revenue. We're hoping to engage in that conversation. I know I've engaged in that conversation with the town administrator and certainly a deeper level with the budget committee. And you've gone through this list extensively. Again, you know, the intercom system at the high school is security, the bathrooms at the middle school and the high school are just necessary and also ADA compliant. The front doors at the middle school are safety. The tennis court may look like a small amount, but it's that pay me now, pay me later. If you don't invest the 5,000, it's going to be 50,000 in a year. The copier replacement, I'm going to turn to Mr. Canavale momentarily. He's going to explain that to you. Again, it's 100,000, but again, the savings on copier and expensive service contracts and things like that actually generate back to the district, so it's a wise investment. We've talked about kitchen upgrade. Again, most of the equipment in our kitchens is circus 1970s. And again, the amount we spend on repairing it and fixing it, again, would offset that within two or three years. And then we, you know, the front door at Fort Barton, again, is a safety, security issue. So let me pause here momentarily, give you some more details on the copier replacement, and then we'll jump back into this presentation. So are you ready, mister?
Can I just, while he's getting that up and running, so this is, and I know we're going to get into it, this is a change from the last time we met. Because now we are back to saying we're going to ask for this to come from that, we're going to ask the budget committee to budget it the same way they do the town side.
Same way they do the town. And you can see the items on there are necessary for all accounts and-
Yep. But that's a change from last time, so I just want to make sure everyone understands that. And I know we're going to get into why in a minute, but-
Yeah, and just because the thoughts in my mind, I don't want to miss it. As you heard Mr. DeQuatto explain tonight, many of those are ride approved projects, so we'll bring that reimbursement back to the town. So if you fund it now, there would be a reimbursement coming with it.
Okay, thank you. So last, we met a week ago, we wanted to talk a little bit more about the copiers, the printers, the scanners that the school district currently has. So with that 100,000 that we just saw on the previous slide, what we would be doing is removing all the desktop printers from each building. Now, the desktop printers are approximately 14 years old and there is at least 68 of them throughout the district. Each one of those devices costs 75 cents per device to get scanned in, to like, kind of like a lease fee on them. And then we pay per page on it for the maintenance contract. My next slide will go over what the per page is on those. There is a copier-scanner combo that's at the Ranger School that's eight years old and it's on its last leg. It's not going to make it another year. So we would be replacing that copier. I'd also like to maintain the current copies that we have at all the other schools currently. Then we would be adding two additional combo copy scanner machines at each elementary school. And we would be adding two additional units at the middle school and three additional units at the high school. Now, by adding these units and removing the desktop printing, so we would be putting copier scanners in the libraries to allow for students to print if they do need to print. So on the next slide that you see up here now, we are looking at the costs of all these updates to be about 100,000. And the rationale for desktop printer rate, it's a penny and a half per page. If we do the same exact service contract with copier scanners, as you can see, it's almost a half a penny. So we're saving 40% on our printer costs just with the service contract alone by switching to copier scanner machines. They're also more reliable, faster, less devices in the district. We also can do something called follow me printing. Now, what this allows us to do is any student or staff, when they send something to print, it actually goes to print to the cloud and it does not show up on any copy machine or printer anywhere in the district. They would then walk over to the copy machine, type in a code or scan their key fob, and then their current printer queue comes out. For a student, they would type in their lunch code. For a faculty member, they would either use a key fob or a code that we assigned to them. By doing this, we notice a lot of times with students that they could be in a specific classroom and send a print job to another room and go, oh, app sent it to the wrong room, let me go back, print it again. So it'll actually allow us to use less paper. With the district moving more one-to-one, there's going to be a lot less printing going on as well. And we are also getting a new LMS system, which will allow the teachers to not print as much either and be able to distribute most of the assignments out to the students directly to their machines.
How many desktop printers did you say?
68.
So you want to replace 68 units with essentially nine?
Yes.
Doesn't sound like enough, does it?
No.
A lot of the desktop printers are in individual people's offices and not in centrally located areas. By going down to the copier scanners, they'll be in more centrally located areas.
But, I mean, I'm thinking this building as an example, it's large.
Yeah.
Where, you're going to put them all in the library?
Nope, one will be in the library, one will be upstairs in the science office area for the top floor. We have one in the teacher's room, we have one in the old guidance office, and one in the main, we'll be putting one in the main office as well.
So how many, so, yeah, what would be the breakdown of numbers in the schools? It'd be one in each of the elementary schools and then-
So there'll be three total devices in each elementary school. So that would allow for printing in the office, the library, and the teacher rooms.
Okay.
At the middle school, there would be one in the main office, two in their copy room, one in their teacher's room upstairs, and one in their library.
So it's more, that's more than nine already?
Well, we also have the current devices as well. So we would be keeping the current combo printer scanners.
So are the ones, the individual ones, like, so those are in classrooms?
No, those are mostly in offices or small-
That many of them?
Sixty.
68 of them?
Yes.
That sounds like a lot. So what's, the principals are sort of all-
I realize we had that many offices versus classrooms, that's why I'm just-
What say you, you five?
It's going to be a major change.
I mean, yeah, I'm just concerned there's going to, it's going to need to be a lot more planning to, or not. I mean, or is it-
I don't think in the elementary it'll be too big of a deal.
I agree.
Okay, difference of opinion, okay.
The way we're set up right now in the elementary is there's a printer in each one of the pods. If we go to three printers plus one in the office, and we put one in the library, one of the pods would be left out without a printer.
Okay, you would have pods, the other schools.
We don't have pods, yeah.
I don't know if three is a little bit much.
Well, and we certainly, I mean, we can look at it again the following year if it's not. I mean, anytime you change, you kind of have to make your bet.
It's definitely a big shift. I would say that, you know, in my last district, we had a school of about 900 students with, you know, a component of staff, and we had five hubs for printing. And it was a big change for the grownups, but it actually became more efficient because you send a student, it can be a class job, or it can be just a schedule in the day for little ones, for big ones. It, you know, you set up a system that works and there's just a reduction in the amount of waste. I mean, I get things printed on my printer that I don't know to whom it belongs. It's somebody's hard written, you know, beautiful essay, and then they must print it again. And it's frustrating for students when they print to the wrong place. And it happens quite a bit in this building and I know even across buildings, sometimes it happens where Pecassett gets something printed out that's clearly an assignment for an older student. So I've lived it and it was hard for about six weeks, but then it just became a new habit.
Are the units we're purchasing better, more, have more features, more? Because that's usually why central, centralized printing works. That's what we do at our office and it's because they're just better. They're better scanners, better printers, better than what we could have individually if we did it. They just have more features.
Currently, 95% of those 68 printers are at least 14 years old.
Yeah, okay.
And I think, you know, we'll sit with Mr. Canavale and we'll just look at what our teachers' needs and what his plans are, and we'll just work together.
And if you need to shift locations, you can.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they can actually be placed anywhere in the buildings. Just, we would try out with that plan that I had and see if it does work out. I know at Fort Barton, they would actually be getting a copy machine in their teacher's room, which they don't currently have.
So are we purchasing? Did I miss that?
Yeah.
We'll work together.
So I mostly see teachers nodding yes. Do you guys have anything to say? No? All right, thumbs up.
It's an unknown.
I mean, it's change.
Right, you know, change. Mr. Chair, and Mr. Canavale kind of went over it quickly. You can't underestimate the less of a reliance on copiers once a one-to-one is fully operational. I mean, I'm not saying next year, it takes time to get it generated, but down the line, you know, any district that's gone that direction absolutely reduces their copy needs by 80 to 90%.
Because it's there. It's on the machine, it's not, you're not delivering it via paper.
Exactly.
And from the high school too, we've faced many a broken printer, so there's nothing quite more pressing than teaching your class three minutes before your class, you know, you see that red, the red bar, so just put the picture up.
So you're recommending that we purchase and not lease?
Yes.
Have you done a cost analysis?
I have. So the typical cost of a combo scanner is around 7,200, depending on if it's color or if it's black and white. When we lease them, we almost pay double. So it's around 14,000 to lease one.
Okay.
But that comes with a service agreement.
They both, no matter what, we always pay the service agreement, which is that per-page price. So the .006 per page on a black and white is what the service contract is with a leased device or a purchased device.
And as a, I just remind you, as a capital request, you want to have it as a purchase, not as a lease, because then you're not sure that capital money's coming back the following year.
Yeah, that becomes a recurrent operational expense.
Then lastly, there's a line item on the budget for rental of equipment and vehicles and it has copiers.
We can buy out of the leases.
No, I'm asking Dr. Senkione, this one. It's got a 65,000 number in there. What's that for?
That's the current leases for the copies we own, all we currently have in district.
Oh, so we'd already lease some.
Yep, which is why we're suggesting you not to do that, because you have that reoccurring operating expense, it becomes painful then.
Yeah, it's not, it's not-
So would this result in a 65,000 savings in the budget as we have it written now?
As Mr. Canavale said, eventually we'll phase that out, but because we currently own those, lease those machines, we need to see the lease through.
And we want to see if we still need them rather than just get rid of them.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well done.
Anything from the room of mine?
So that was part of the capital. And we're going to continue with an explanation, okay. So, well, we have staff here, so this is worth showing. I've shown this to you a number of times. I know that, you know, the scrutiny of our budget sometimes leads to, well, you know, there was a huge contract increase this year. And I guess I'll let you define what huge is or not, but, you know, the impact, so intention and impact, we always look at that. And certainly, you know, our staff is our most valuable asset. You hear me say that over and over again. You know, we're about to send our principals out to three different job fairs and recruit for the best and the brightest teachers out there. And this is what happened as a result of the new teacher contract for this year. So again, you see step one and you see where Tividan lies against, you know, other districts that we compete with. And at step five, the gap's a little closer, but, you know, you still see where Tividan ends up. And you see at the top step, sorry for that, top step where it is also. So it's just, you know, it's a contrast to show against an argument that said, that anyone may make, that, you know, that there's these contracts that you put out there. Well, you did and you did the right thing and hopefully this is going to continue to grow as the contract manifests itself. But, you know, it's all about being in the same realm of, as our communities that we compete against and want to retain the best and the brightest teachers.
And I'm guessing this is what you did, but I'm just going to ask so that we can point it out, those are all geographically close to where we are. That's why you picked them. We didn't pick them just because they were higher than us.
No, just who touches us, who's around us.
Right.
And I'll add in any other community if you like.
Right, but that's, but if you look at us and then where people are coming from, these are the closest district.
In Rhode Island.
In Rhode Island, right. Oh, yeah.
So this has been going on for years. We always call the Rhode Island Association of School Committees when we're doing contracts, and they send us the charts and graphs. And Tividan, as you can see, you can't see it, but we're always at the bottom. And that also goes for police and fire. And as Mrs. Polish said, can go across the bridge and make so much more money, you know, for a young family with a mortgage and everything. So that's another piece that we always have to look at. This has been going on for years and that's why we try to help this year and try to catch up to where we belong. So the teachers have been taking zero. Now, when I first started, this was surprising when I tell people this, the co-pay was 1150 flat when I first started on the school committee. And then we started to negotiate, and healthcare, we know, was crazy. So we tried to say, let's do a percentage so we could be more sure of what would happen. It was a big conversation when we went to 12, we went to 15, 18, and then to 20. And at that point, we went to the highest in the state. At the same time, the teachers were taking zero. The Council 94 was, the superintendent had 3% in his contract. He gave that up because everyone else, it wouldn't have been right for him to take it. But this is the history that people have to quickly hear. So when I go to a, when people are running for office and I'm sitting in the audience and someone says, I'm sick of those teachers getting all that fun balance every year. And I go, wait, when did that happen? And I haven't missed a meeting, so I want to know when it happened. So just said, whatever you know, and a quick history of that. We appreciate what the teachers have done, it's Council 94, we've all worked together. When we needed you, we asked you to help and you did. And this year, we said, we want to start to catch up again, as Dr. Senkione said. So that's the facts and everybody can look them up. They're there, thank you.
Also, the last part of the presentation is talk a little bit, again, outside of our operating budget, but another source of revenue that needs some explanation and understanding is Medicaid reimbursement. So just, you know, it's a federal law that allows for the towns across the country to So just, you know, it's a federal law that allows for the towns across the country to recoup costs for services that are medically necessary that are documented on a child's IEP. So there's some bullet points beyond that. And here in Tividan, we, in fact, do that. We bill, we bill back for things such as speech and language, OT and PT, other qualifying services. The regional special ed department handles this for us, and they maintain the account, although it's Tividan's revenue, they maintain the account for us. There's an important point here to understand that this year, you're going to need to use one point, almost seven million dollars of that revenue for expenses in this year's budget for special education, for increases in out-of-district tuition, and for the district assessment. And, you know, the result of that is when you, again, I think now it's pertinent, if we just go back to a slide here. So historical numbers, if you look at FY fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, you can see the increase in the budget, oh point six, zero point six, zero point nine, one point one. Well, we know special ed increases by fifteen to twenty percent a year. So all those years, you had to have been under-budgeting for special ed. There's just no way you could ever keep up with that cost. And somehow you manage that by using Medicaid or the fund balance or things like that. Well, unfortunately, it's kind of just caught up now, and you're at a position where there is a huge gap in the budget that was provided for for FY nineteen and the actual expenditures that the district needs to face for, for special education. We were predicting a budget of balance to start on July first of twenty nineteen of about two hundred thousand. So I'm going to ask Mr. Crowley now to give you a little more detail on that one point seven million dollar expenditure that we need to account for.
Welcome, Mr. Crowley. I know I wasn't here.
This is a handout. The documents, the slides you're going to see.
I'm happy to be here. Not particularly happy with the tidings that I'm about to bring, but the, we've been going through the budget. One of the first things I noticed when I was looking through the budget materials, there was something that didn't look particularly appropriate in terms of how the out-of-district placements had been budgeted. And also, there was an issue in terms of how the assessment to the Newport County Collaborative was, was funded. So you have a sheet in front of you, which basically has the same information that you're looking at here. In terms of the collaborative, we have about one point nine million dollars that we have to pay. That particular line item was budgeted at just over a million dollars. So it gave us an eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar shortfall in that line. If you take a look at the, in the bottom part, you know, the previous year's actuals versus budgets, they were relatively close. And, you know, it was very hard, and Superintendent and I have been trying to go through and figure out why the.
Those were just the assessments on the bottom, Joe? Just the assessment piece?
The, the bottom is last.
Prior year assessments.
Two thousand, yeah, the, the actual assessment, or the end-of-year assessment of cost versus how much was budgeted.
Okay.
And then things will change at, you know, at the collaborative, so you, you know, some years you might be doing better than other years. But, you know, for the most part, the, they were relatively close, nowhere near like what we're looking at here. Now, when we look at the out-of-district placements, we're seeing something relatively akin to what we're seeing there. The, we're being billed about one point nine million, have been billed one point nine million, going to be billed another six hundred and fifty thousand. So the total for the year, and these are for all students, special needs students who are placed in various out-of-district facilities. So we're looking at two and a half million dollars. One point two million was budgeted for the year. The, which gave us that, that shortfall. Now, there's three hundred thousand dollars, which has been budgeted in IDEA funds, federal funds. And from what I understand, and the staff has been going through all of the numbers, trying to, you know, squeeze money out of a variety of places. There's, there were some monies that came to the district a couple of years ago that actually no longer comes directly to the district. It goes to the town. But because the, of what happened a couple of years ago, there is a fund out there with a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in it that can be used to, to address some of this deficit. And then the Medicaid money that the superintendent referenced would, would have to make up the, the rest of it. And again, you know, looking at the, what happened in the prior two years, in both of those years, there was, there was a surplus, which is very interesting in terms of special, special needs tuitions, because those things, you know, I've often told people, you can, you know, you can, you can't control them. You can monitor them, but you can't control them. So the fact that there were surpluses in those two years is, is, you know, not a bad thing. So that was the prior two years. For whatever reason, this year, the, and I've been going back and forth with the Newport Collaborative in terms of why did that number jump up the way it did? One of the reasons is the, there was one very expensive addition to the special ed out-of-district placements, and there were thirteen other.
This year?
Addition, this year. Thirteen additional students have been put into out-of-place, out-of-district placements this year, which is, you know, and I've been going, as I say, I've been going back and forth with the collaborative, trying to figure out why this is so. It seemed like an inordinate number of students. But I've got, you know, I've got the list, so I can see, you know, place by place, student by student.
And you can compare it to last year's list to see new, 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 new.
These were all new placement.
Well, what I did was I went through, because the list I have has the entry dates.
Yep. Oh, so you can tell with the entry, by entry date?
So, and anybody that started school, you know, the, essentially a year ago, September, there's fourteen, fourteen new ones. So we're trying to find why these numbers are what they are. Now, the, the office staff, as I mentioned, has been very, very helpful to us. And the, as a matter of fact, Carolyn found something for me. There's, there's a lot of stuff there. There are a lot of files and, and such. And the fact that the, you know, both the superintendent and I knew, you know, we don't have a lot of the institutional memory that would help somebody who had been in the job for a number of years. So we did find a, a document that indicated that there was an expectation that the, there would be about a three million dollar deficit come the end of the year in special ed costs. And four hundred thousand dollars was going to be allocated from the Medicare. This document said three hundred and seventy-seven thousand was going to be out of IDEA. But in fact, when the IDEA budget was put together, it was three hundred thousand. Then it has a number of education jobs balance, extra Medicaid, other federal, the FY, I'm assuming this is, should be eighteen additional state aid, ERRP, surplus, freeze. They had all those different, I'm assuming, sources of income with no indication as to how much each of those could be tapped or how much they could be tapped. So the, we're sitting there with the, you know, the very, very significant shortfall in terms of those, those two lines. Fortunately, there is Medicaid money out there to cover those expenses, but you're going to use up virtually all of the Medicaid money that, that you had accumulated.
Let me know. I've got lots of questions.
Me too.
I just do.
Who wants to start?
Can I, first of all, call your attention to FY seventeen?
Yeah, that's a deficit.
Not a surplus.
We budgeted, we spent more than we budgeted.
No, I'm sorry. You're right. Missed that one.
Numbers are right.
And, you know, I did speak with Dr. Senkione about the out-of-district placements. One, there were an unusually large number of students being placed, starting in the spring of two thousand eighteen to current. And that would have been all past any budgeting efforts that we had already undertaken for this current fiscal year. So that is one piece of this. You know, and, you know, Dr. Senkione, you, you can confirm or not confirm, you know, a lot of what we're seeing, it, you know, has to do with some of the common themes that we're, we're hearing throughout the district and throughout society in general. There's so many children with problems, and that's really what's, what's happening here. And then, secondly, I also wanted to point out that, I, I agree with you, Joe, that based upon projections for this year, our special ed cost could go up to four and a half million dollars. We don't have anywhere near that budgeted, and that we will most indeed need to draw down those Medicaid funds. My concern going beyond that is, what about FY twenty?
That was my question.
How are we going to get through that?
Yeah.
Because, because you, if you're saying, if you're saying that you only have in your budget one point, when we budgeted, you only had in your budget, what, like one, two million? And you're saying it's four point five. Is this kid's going to go away? I mean, where's, how can our FY twenty budget be? I mean, we're, we've created a structural deficit.
Well, special education costs have created a structural deficit.
Well, we. We have, not we created, we have. That's a better word.
We have one, yeah, right.
Right now, the FY twenty budget recommendation is only about one point nine.
One point eight nine million.
Right. And again, we're factoring in the IDA grant and a small amount out of Medicaid.
Even so, if you're talking about four point five million dollars in costs and you budgeted two million, you're talking about a two million dollar structural deficit.
Can we actually go back to the slide that we just had up, but took down? That was green background.
So, so do we want to address nineteen first?
Well, I just want to work through those numbers first, because this is all information that is new
Yep.
on March twelfth, two thousand nineteen, generally to me. So let's go down to the bottom of the slide so we can work through it. And everyone who is only as sharp as I am can sort of understand this. FY two thousand seventeen, we actually had a deficit of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We had money in the region, or, you know, sort of with the special education program that could cover that. Now, just to get back to that, that fund of about one point eight million dollars grew up over, over twenty years. So from the mid nineteen nineties to two thousand eighteen.
And I'm sure you covered that deficit in seventeen with the IDA grant.
Right.
We did. Well, we drew it down.
So, so then in FY eighteen, sort of actuals to budget, there's about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar surplus. So went back into that one point eight million dollar fund for covering things like this. Our actuals in FY eighteen were one point one three eight. And now you're telling us that our actuals in two thousand nineteen, or FY two thousand nineteen, are two point five million dollars?
Yes.
So essentially, a hundred percent increase on our special education costs.
As I said, I've got a list with every student and what the costs are for those students, and it comes up to that two and a half million dollars.
So because when we used to, when we do, we did the FY nineteen budget, and I realize you two didn't build it. We always did it one line item, and now we're sort of pulling it out in pieces. So my question is to you, is there anywhere else in FY nineteen that we may have special ed funds buried, whether it's transportation or salary, that really would reduce this?
There was, there was a notation in the document that talked about where monies might come from.
And it wasn't either one of those things?
The special ed out-of-district was budgeted at such and such an amount, but the, it was supposed to be at one point nine million, and it ended up being a one point two million, with a reference saying that the rest of the money was going to be coming from special ed transportation. Well, I went through all the special ed transportation.
Okay, that was my question.
There's no seven hundred thousand dollars in there.
So where is that in the budget? Is that in the transportation line? It's like three lines up? Okay. And so you're comfortable, when you look at FY nineteen, that that transportation line and then that salary line up at the top are accurate, Peter?
Well, when you're tracking it, you know, we're three quarters away, almost three quarters of the way through the school year, it's tracking at that amount. So you can see there's no, there's nothing left.
Right. So my point being that we're not going to all of a sudden see a seven hundred thousand dollar surplus in either one of those lines because it wasn't built in there. That's my question. Thank you.
So, okay, so our, our expenses jumped from one point one three eight to two point five four one. And
Holy cow.
our budget was one point two seven four, which leaves a shortfall of one point two six six. I'm, I'm on solid ground here so far in understanding this.
Out-of-district.
Right. Well, that's out-of-district placements, right?
That's it.
Because the other one had a big deficit as well.
And you're saying that of that one point two six, that three hundred, one thirty-four, eight thirty-two, that those are funds that we are going to be able to apply to that one point two million dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that comes to one point two six, well, one point.
It'll balance out to zero.
Yeah, okay. Just about, right. So then, prior slide.
There you go. Same issue.
So we had a, in FY two thousand seventeen, we actually had about a two twenty-one deficit, right? And in FY eighteen, we had a seventy-five thousand dollar deficit. And we budgeted.
One million.
One million, and our actuals are one point eight million.
Yep.
So then, what is this, eight six, so eight sixty-five? So how do you get to two hundred thousand dollars left in that fund?
So eight sixty-five plus eight sixty-five, so you have to take both of them, one point six million.
I thought eight sixty-five, so the minus eight sixty-five is.
There's two different pieces. The assessment from the region and out-of-district placements. Each of them are under-budgeted by eight sixty-five each.
But I thought our district, right? Oh, okay, so Medicaid. So you're talking about, so the, okay, so go back to the other slide. So when you're saying Medicaid, you're saying a drawdown from that one point eight million dollar fund. This is not the Medicaid reimbursement that we would expect this year?
No, it's the one that's been accumulated.
And the Medicaid reimbursement that we would expect this year is the three hundred thousand dollars?
That's the IDA grant.
Yeah. So, so I guess Jerry's point is there's probably another two or three hundred thousand in there that we would anticipate in FY nineteen having to be available to draw down?
July first of twenty nineteen, you should plan on two hundred thousand dollars in that account, which you want to keep, because again, if.
So maybe when, if we, this Medicaid, if we could say Medicaid and drawdown, maybe just to sort of define that that's what we mean when we're saying, if we redo this for the Budget Committee, that what we're saying is, yes, we have one point eight million over at the region, but we now have two drawdowns from it to balance.
With fiscal nineteen.
So that two point five, I'm sorry, Jerry, were you all set?
No.
Go ahead.
So isn't there a ceiling that any individual IEP is supposed to hit? And then we get eligible for either state or federal reimbursement?
But that money is apparently, from what I understand, is going to the town.
And that's what that one thirty-four is?
It's like excess special ed costs.
But they have to give it to us. I mean, it flows through. It's probably not unlike the state aid.
Two point five million dollar bill, we only were eligible for one thirty-four, you think?
That's, I'm not sure how much it is now. That is amount of money, from what I understand, I've been told, that came several years back.
Right.
It was put into a special account.
Right.
Since that time, the, that reimbursement is going through the town, and, you know, it ends up in the town's accounts rather than the state's.
Every year, it's going to the town?
No, it flows through to us as aid. It does. It's part of the state aid.
And just to clarify, that has nothing to do with the total. It's an individual cost.
No, I understand that.
It's an average cost that most kids might apply, and so then it looks as if we might have one or two students whose support needs exceed that state-defined average cost, and a lot is a reimbursement of the extraordinary excess. So it has nothing to do with the, the total. It's on an individual child, by child assessment.
Right. And these are all IEPs that were new, or out-of-district placements that were new in this academic year or fiscal year?
The new ones, yeah. Either move, I can, can confirm that several of those students were move-ins, some kids who moved.
Move-ins, okay.
Yeah, and, and, and this is the point we always make about the unpredictability of, of special ed is when you have move-ins, they can be expensive. I mean, they can be. is when you have move-ins, they can be expensive. I mean, they can be 300, 400,000 a piece.
Some were, I think, but I don't know if they all were.
You had one very significant one.
Move-in.
Not only in terms of the tuition, but because of the fact that the school was in Boston.
Which is fine. That's our responsibility, but that's what we're saying.
I'm not arguing that point. I'm just trying to understand the numbers.
Right, exactly. It's just.
But it was a large amount of money, plus the transportation costs associated with it. It was also a very large, you know, so you're probably talking somewhere over $200,000.
Okay.
I was looking at the state aid numbers and the extra cost special ed component each year. We had been rising, and it's only a small piece. It was $53,000 in '17, $74,000 in '18, 110 in '19, but it's looking like 20 is projected to be only $71,000, and kind of surprising to me, given the increase in our costs, that that aid number went down. Is that based on something else, other than our experience?
Do we know? Hmm, okay. And that's that other piece, Peter, of aid, that we see when they give us the, I wonder how they calculate that, when we've seen.
The October 1st report. That's how they calculate it. So I don't know where we were on October 1st.
Ah, okay. And I bet it even could have been, they could be doing the year before, because they have to project their budget. So we could see perhaps a significant increase next year. All right. So we're comfortable it's not in FY 19, where that's gonna be the shortfall? But again, back to my concern.
So yeah, so now what do we do?
What do we, FY 20, we seem to have a structural deficit, because they're not going away. So if you only budgeted 2 million, and you're telling me our costs are now 4.5.
Wait, wait, what is 4.5? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Well, the two things together. We now have a structural deficit. We can certainly, we're gonna cover it in FY 19. We will not be able to cover it in FY 20.
So we think in the FY 20 proposal that you saw this evening, that some of that money was budgeted out to the COA accounts, and so it's in other places, and that's what Joe.
Are we sure?
Well, that's what we've been working on the last couple of days since we've discovered this, and trying to identify those costs.
You mean the non-special ed accounts?
Right. So we may have put some of the special ed salaries in our salary number, and so that, because I guess the state asked to track it that way.
They do.
But in fact, we know that that money will come back to those accounts, so we're trying to look at every line item to see what portion of that money will come back in to cover this Fed balance.
I mean, we, we can only ask the Budget Committee for 4% by law, so this doesn't impact that request, because that's our legal cap. The bigger concern is, what do we do if there is a $2 million structural? I mean, that's, we don't even have, we don't even have enough money in our other fund balance if we unspent, and if we uncommit to cover that.
That's 6% of our budget.
That's what I'm saying. We don't have enough, we don't, we don't have enough of that. We don't have it to cover. And when we know we're gonna spend a deficit, we have to report it to the state, and we have to have an action plan about how we're going to, so we need to, that's real important for us to know what is and isn't in that 20 budget.
Understood.
I know you know that. I'm just reiterating that.
So, yeah.
So we found money and we lost money, all within a week.
Or you could say, I think there was always, you know, some thought that that money was gonna be allocated for that expense. It seems like the FY 19 budget was created that way.
True. It would have been, it would have been preferable that the school committee knew the plan and the existence, but we, you know, in any event. I mean, that's the only thing I can even think of, is, and we talked about this, is there was a plan to draw that down, and that's why the budget was, was what it was, is there was a plan potentially all along to draw it down. But that was, but that was a planned structural deficit, yeah, that certainly is concerning. So, so we have a budget to go forward with, to the Budget Committee, and you guys are still looking at FY 20? Well, I know we all, it's like, this is like our second job.
Do you think we should recommend to Dr. Senkione that he go ahead and just request the entire 4%?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's only $12,000 more. Let's request it.
I realize that, but.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Now, we can only request 4%. The town can give us more than 4%, because the town's cap is on the levy. I, but I'm not sure that we're, we're there. I'm not sure we're there to ask for it if we think, because we're not, we're still looking at FY 20.
And we have to submit a number on March 16th.
Well, I think we have to submit what we have, and then we have to have, we have to keep digging to see how much of a structural deficit we may or may not have in '20.
I'd also like representation from Newport County to come to a meeting soon.
Yeah, that's.
To talk through this.
An important issue. So when, when were they aware of, have we talked to them at all? And could they tell us when they were aware that we were running, you know, whatever it was?
They don't look at our budget.
1.6 million dollar.
Yeah, they.
They don't look at our budget. We do.
We.
Well, they have to look at what they're billing us, or what.
Well, they, but they don't know what we've allocated.
They don't know what we budgeted. They're not looking at our budget.
When we first discovered this, you know, three or four days ago, we went to them and said, is this the accurate billing for these students? And they confirmed that, and they confirmed the assessment amount for us for FY 19, but they never know what our operating.
They don't look at our budget.
But, okay, so then from our end, if we're adding many IEPs or costly IEPs, when, when did we sort of ever have that crystallized for us? Do you know?
Right now.
Right now. Yeah, right now.
Three days ago.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions?
No, I just, if we do know we have a deficit, we have to give it to Officer Municipal Affairs, and then write to the President of the Town Council with our plan to get out of that deficit. That's legal.
Well, and that's two, that's a different issue than the one I was talking about. If we think we're gonna have a deficit this year, and clearly we do, we need to do whatever reporting we need to do to Office of Municipal Finance with our plan to cover it with Medicaid. That's what, FY 20 is different, but FY 19, right.
Yeah, that's '19, but the '20 we know going forward.
So the last side of the presentation, I would suggest to the Budget Committee Thursday evening, is in fact why that $31.9 million budget is critical, because again, as Ms. Powell just said repeatedly, you know, you're creating a structural deficit when you don't fund the amount of your fixed and mandated costs are. You rely on one-time revenue, you spend the one-time revenue, then you don't have it, and you have a deficit. You know, we know that the town has growth of 3%, and they have a significant amount of money from the casinos, and it seems, you know, I'll say this to you, and delicately maybe nudge them, that it seems very doable to fund our budget at almost 4% based upon the revenue that's there without increasing taxes. So it's certainly a good case to be made.
And certainly, if FY 20, if we find that there is gonna be that sort of large deficit, we'll need to start talking about it sooner rather than later, because we certainly do have the ability to, I mean, there are general reserves out there as well that also are, you know, put aside for the schools on the town side. So, I mean, the sooner we can have that conversation about how large that is or isn't, the better. But, yeah, I mean, I think that's put the whole 4% up for now, because that's all we can do, and. So what kind of, what kind of information, or what kind of, can we have a list? I know we can't give students, but, because if I'm the Budget Committee, I'm gonna say, wait a minute. We, you were all set, then I heard you found $1.8 million, well, no, that there was a $1.8 million over in another account that.
That was already encumbered.
That, that we became, that you became aware of, and now I, all of a sudden, I'm hearing that your costs are gonna go up almost exactly the same amount, and so I want to be able to externally support that number from the region that says, no, here's your assessment, it's 1.8 million. And externally, with the list of, here's the cost, here's what we, like, do we have a copy of that bill, that 1.8? And then here's what you're gonna get billed. So it's not just us saying that, here's some external proof that this is, this is what the cost is.
Well, I don't think we can certainly discuss it in open session, and we can, but I think we can do it in executive and de-identify.
Well, he's, they've got the bill.
Yeah.
I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't identify anybody.
I can give you, even without putting out an individual student cost, such-and-such a program.
Perfect. That would be perfect, Joe.
That's what we need to know, not necessarily anything about the student ID.
And that's easy to project, too. I mean, you never know what a child will need. You never know when a child's ready to resume attendance in public school, but you can certainly look at a birth date, know I'm gonna turn 22, and, you know, factor that out long-term, sort of for a worst-case budget expense, to say, current students, you know.
Of course, understanding that there are two-year-olds that are gonna be taking the place of the 22-year-olds.
Right, right, right. But I guess what I'm looking to do is just really substantiate that 2.5 and the 1.8 in a way that, you know, people can see it and go, okay, yep.
In your budget book, we actually gave you that. So we redacted all the student names.
Perfect, okay.
And we'll update that. That was based upon, I believe, December, so we'll do the February one.
I have a budget.
Any questions from anyone else, administration, public, teachers, anyone? We need a motion, I believe, to recommend the budget.
I'll recommend the budget at 4% max from the municipal, the non-appropriate, the municipal side, we'll call it that, plus our state aid.
Is there a second?
Second. Do we need to actually calculate the dollar or vote?
We can.
We have in the past.
Can you go back to that slide?
It's right, yeah, it's 938, 154.
Look at you. Plus the 776, 198?
Plus our FY 19 budget, yep.
Oh, yeah, it's the top item there. It's the 1. almost $6 million of revenue. So you're looking for, the budget number is the 31 million? Oh, I'm sorry, wait, it's the delta between?
Yes.
The 922, 354, and the 930.
And the 9, yes.
38, 154.
And then just add it to that top number. It's gonna be 31, 950-ish. Start bringing my 10 key.
That's what we're trying to calculate.
Who's gonna do it? So it's 15,800. Do you want to add?
Plus 31, 931, 920. I'm getting 31, 947, 720?
31, 947, 720?
That's what I got.
31.
947, 720. So moved.
947, 720.
Yep.
So we're all in agreement. 31,947,720. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you, Joe. I'm Peter.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move into our next? I'll ask for a motion to re-enter executive session. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay.